I'd like to call to order the March 20th, 2018, Porcosson City School Board Meeting. And first up is pledge to the flag and inspirational reading. Curtis?
Nathan Barton will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Nathan is a junior at Porcosson High School who is involved with Model UN, Academic Challenge, and DECA. Through Tabernacle United Methodist Church, he volunteers with Vacation Bible School and the Appalachian Service Project. After high school, he plans to major in business.
Please stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our inspirational reader for the evening is McKay Freeman. McKay is a junior at PHS. She is the principal flute and drum major in the Islander Band. She is also in FCA, Leo Club, Chess Club, French Honor Society, and Muaf Theater. Jay is a member of the Porcosson Apostolic Church Straight Praise Team and plans to study pulmonology at Duke after graduation.
Vince Lombardi once said, "Perfection is not attainable, but if we chase perfection, we can catch excellence." As a perfectionist myself, this quote is important to me. Too often, we get so caught up in the minute details that we miss the big picture. I know that I for one do this. I get so upset about the small mistakes that are keeping me from obtaining perfection that I don't see the great accomplishment I've made. While we should all keep on striving to reach perfection so that we can be the best versions of ourselves, it is also important that we pause and take a look at all we've done. When we take a break from our constant stress, we are truly, we are able to truly appreciate our excellence. Nobody is perfect, and while we should never give up on trying to be, accepting that can remove a whole lot of stress and show us how amazing we truly are.
Thank you McKay and Nathan. Next up, student presentations, and students, please hang around for a few minutes. We would like to take a short break here in just a little while, and we'd like to come out and speak with you. Ms. Whitaker?
Absolutely, we have an exciting presentation tonight. Under the guidance of Ms. Ellen Fisella, students from Porcosson High School partnered with NASA to participate in the High School Students United with NASA to Create Hardware or HUNCH program. Through their engineering courses at PHS, students design items in response to challenges identified by the astronauts and engineers working with the International Space Station. Last year, all six PHS designs were accepted by NASA and are currently at the Johnson Space Center in Texas for design development. This year, PHS students have tackled numerous design challenges and developed prototypes in partnership with Ms. Fisella, PHS physics teacher Mr. Diggs, and their NASA mentors. These students will share some of the experiences and prototypes with us tonight. Travis Redman, Ian Burris, Cole Parks, Raiden Durant, Zach Wilson, Nolan Vetac, and Lawrence White. Please come on up.
Hello, I'm Zach Wilson. I, along with other groups of classmates of mine, have participated in designing hardware and software for NASA. This program has given us an opportunity to experience unique engineering problems and interact with experts of the engineering fields. HUNCH has taken us outside the normal boundaries of school curriculum and has allowed us valuable insight into interactive design process. Here's our first group with a low-gravity can crusher. Okay, so basically, the astronauts on the International Space Station needed a way to save space in their garbage and contain the debris of the cans. So they sent this to us for us to make a way to crush the cans. So... Cans need to exert a force of roughly 3,000 PSI in order to crush a can. Right now, we're in the design revision stage to crimp the can to reduce the necessary pressure required to compress the can. So to, to come up with all of our ideas, we divided into multiple small groups and then came back together at the end for, to see which one was the best, really, and take the best ideas of all of them. And these are just some pictures of our can crushers that we came up with. Alright, so NASA gave me and my team the problem of the fact that the things that the astronauts in space use to wash themselves and other hygiene objects, they just kinda, they don't really have a set place. So they just float around and they wanted us to make a type of caddy to put on to the International Space Station. Next slide, please. So what we designed was, we designed a regular caddy that had to be forty-one and a half inches long and one diameter and an inch. And we designed it so we could put the, we can connect boxes on ends of the pole. And then in each of the individual boxes for each astronaut, they can put inside their objects that they use to clean themselves with, or like a comb, or their shampoo, or anything like that. And on the actual pole itself, they wanted us to hang towels on it, so we hung towels on it. And we designed a clip specifically for the International Space Station that clips onto the towels and the space station itself. Next slide, please. That's our little model of what it looks like. Next slide. What NASA wanted us to change is the lid for the boxes weren't simple enough to come off, so they wanted, or they would rather us have like a net that could easily come on and off. And they wanted the individual compartments personalized for each astronaut to their own satisfaction. And they just wanted it to be easier because everything in space is hard, pretty much.
Hello? Alright, hi, I'm Nolan Svetak, and me, along with my teammates, took on the challenge of doing the crew mission reminder tool. So, our team took on the challenge of making a more customized calendar tool for the astronauts aboard the ISS. The tools the astronauts have right now kind of lack features, which would make working as a team more difficult. And we believe that adding these features would allow them to have a more streamlined schedule and reduce confusion in their day-to-day activities. We're the only local team to take on this issue, and we felt that we have rose to the challenge accordingly. So, next slide.
The website that we designed will be used for planning day-to-day activities on the ISS. The site will have tools to help the astronauts manage activities, allow mission controllers to manage their schedules, and contain other features which highlight team usability. We hope this team-oriented take on a traditional calendar will enrich the work lives of the astronauts on the International Space Station.
We have some pictures of the, it's got squeezed a little bit, but you can just see some of our work here. We have the login page, which is just a rough draft, and then we have just some example code that we've written, and kind of a preview at the top right. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ian Burris, and we were assigned the, or we chose the pin kit aboard the International Space Station. So, the astronauts, when repairing electrical work on the International Space Station, have a kit they would use to carry the repairing tools needed. And they had a big problem with parts flying out because there were small parts, wires and such. And it wasn't efficient, and so when they would have parts that they needed, it would fly away and they wouldn't be able to grab it. So we used various pockets of various sizes. And for the one for very small parts that you would even have trouble gripping here on Earth with your hand, we put them in a Petri dish that sealed over. And these pockets had multiple straps of Velcro to where it would be very hard even, even in microgravity to escape. And the organization, it was very messy, unorganized pages in the binder for the pin kit. So we improved organization instead of making it a binder type, we made it a, similar to a bifold wallet. And here are a few pictures of our design that we took to present to the, for feedback. And the one thing, some of the feedback that we got was we needed to add some more pages and change more pages, and have a way to strap the pin kit, say a leg, or something to make it convenient so that the pin kit wasn't just floating around in the air. And then that the pouches needed to be more efficient, Velcro wears out after a while, so they suggested using a different material than Velcro for the pockets.
So, the foot restraint was derived from the single-point harness, which we thought that a single-point harness would be way too big and bulky for an astronaut to achieve something that can be done in a short amount of time. So, we came up with the foot restraint because it was small, easy to use, and it was much more efficient, I guess to say, in, in an astronaut's life. So, basically, the boots for the foot restraint are going to be attached to the preceding seat track mounts mounted between each window of the cupola. So in the cupola, there are six windows in a dome shape that the astronauts can look out and see the Earth with, and they needed a way to look out to the Earth in a much easier manner so that they're stable and can, and photographers can get a stable and clear picture of the Earth. We chose a rollerblade boot because it's made of a strong plastic outer shell that's durable and can withstand constant use by the astronauts. And the boot also has a soft inner lining that forms to any size foot using the adjustment straps on the front side of the boot. These are some of the pictures.
The star foam piece right there is the adapter piece to the rollerblade because the rollerblade is not very flat on the bottom. And we have the parts like the rollerblade, the adapter piece, and the model seat track in the middle picture, so you can see how it combines. And the very last part, the last picture, is the boot on the seat track.
In closing, the students participated in a critical review session, March 6th at NASA, where the, we had astronauts that reviewed their projects, gave them feedback. We were, received notification today that the foot restraint and the students that participated do have the opportunity to go to Johnson Space Center in Texas. They were selected, they were finalists, and we're waiting to hear from NASA and Glenn Johnson about other ones as well, who will possibly be able to get to Johnson Space Center for finalists.
Very impressive, thank you all very much. Thank you, Ms. Fisella, for your guidance, and Mr. Diggs. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not this evening.
And then we'll go into recognitions. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, as Dr. Carter moves, he will be handing out the recognitions, and I am very excited to see such a large crowd for all of our recognitions tonight. So, we're going to start here with the March Student of the Month, and that is Sabrina Elshanti. If she would come forward, please. Sabrina is a senior at Porcosson High School and the March Student of the Month. She's a young lady who has always gone above and beyond to help her classmates and is a true role model to her school and community. Sabrina has an outstanding resume to include honor roll ninth through twelfth grades, French Honor Society, District Band, English Student of the Year, and French Student of the Year. She's a member of the National Honor Society, Math Honor Society, and an AP Scholar. Sabrina also attended Virginia Girl State. She's a member of Symphonic Band, Leo Club, and is on the Color Guard. Outside of school, Sabrina volunteers her time with Walk for a Cure, Type 1 Diabetes, and Tudors in French. She will attend William &amp; Mary and major in Biology. Please join me in congratulating Sabrina for being our March Student of the Month. Well, next, I'm very happy to recognize our wrestlers and the wrestling team. We're going to recognize our high school wrestlers for accomplishments that they had at the state tournament. Porcosson's wrestling team had another successful season this year, winning the Big Orange, Ram Rumble, and Region 2A Tournament. The wrestling team also placed ten wrestlers in the top six out of thirteen wrestlers that qualified en route to winning at the 2018 2A Team State Championships. What we'd like to do first are recognize those wrestlers who finished in the top three in the state. I'd ask that Brett Polteny come forward, please. Brett is a junior and won the state championship at 113-pound weight class. Brett had another outstanding season, finishing the year with a 31-6 record. Brett also finished first at the Big Orange and Region 2A Tournament. Please join me in congratulating Brett on his win at state. Next, I ask that Cole McCormick come forward. Cole is a sophomore and won first place at the state wrestling tournament at the 120-pound weight class. Cole finished the year with a record of 37-3 and had 22 pins. Cole was also the 2018 Big Orange, Ram Rumble, and Region 2A champion. Please join me in congratulating Cole on his first-place win. The next face is very familiar to the school board and to me, Patrick McCormick, if you'd please come forward. Patrick is a senior who is now a four-time state champion after winning first place at the state competition in the 126-pound weight class this year. Patrick has a record of 38-1 this season, bringing his career record to 173-9. Patrick is also a National Honor Society member and carries a 4.0 GPA. Patrick committed to the University of Virginia where he will continue his academic and athletic career at the Division One level. Please join me in congratulating Patrick for his fourth state championship. And I just have to say this because I know Patrick has said that to his dad, but that gives you one more over your dad, so. Next, I'd ask that Mason Fisella come forward, please. Mason is a senior who won the state championship at the 195-pound weight class. Mason was unbeaten on the year with a record of 36-0, with a team-high of 24 pins. Mason plans on attending Central University where he is committed to continue his athletic and academic career at the Division One level. Please join me in congratulating Mason on his state championship. Next, I ask that Robert Hennessy come forward. We will recognize Robert at the next meeting if he can make it. Colton Hicks, if you'd please come forward. Colton is a junior and finished second place in the 170-pound class at the state tournament. Colton is now a three-time state place finisher after finishing fifth place as a freshman and sophomore. Colton finished the year with a 39-6 record and with 16 pins. Please join me in congratulating Colton on his second-place finish at the state. Ian Burris, if you'd please come forward. Ian is a senior who finished third in the 182-pound class at the state tournament. Ian has been a four-year varsity starter, first qualifying for the state tournament where he finished sixth place as a junior. Ian had a season record of 37 and a career record of 101-43. Please join me in congratulating Ian for his third-place win at the state tournament. Now, what I'm going to ask is that the members of the wrestling team come forward as I call each person, and we do have plaques for each one of them, so. First, Trevor Wiggins. Brett Polteny. Cole McCormick. Joseph Giappazzi. Alden Monroe. Patrick McCormick. Bobby Long. Colton Bark. Evan Parker. Cole Parks. Severn Vandevander. Jake Williams. Aiden Holloway. Andrew Holloway. Cordell Johnson. Conrad Johnson. Colton Hicks. Ian Burris. Donovan Edwards. Mason Fisella. And again, I know Robert Hennessy's not with us. Caleb Smith. Raiden Bacchus. And Dalton Jones. We'd also like to recognize their coaches, and I'm not sure if he's, Coach Eric Decker? And also, the assistant coaches, Kendall Ridnour. Mike McCormick. Glenn Parks. And Chad Polteny. Please join me in congratulating all of our students, athletes, and the coaches for an incredible season and for winning the 2A state championships this year. And just so you all know too, this meeting is being recorded, so soon it will be on our website under School Board Meetings, and you'll be able to share this whole recording anywhere you would like, so it's there for you. Congratulations again, gentlemen, thank you, and remember to stay until we finish all of our recognitions. Well, Porcosson High School's winter track team also had a successful season this year. Seven competitors qualified for states and collectively brought home five All-State titles, including two firsts, one second, and two sixth-place finishes and a new state record. First, we'd like to recognize Clint Gault, if you would please come forward. Another familiar face to us. Clint Gault is a senior and has had a storied running career at the high school. As a sophomore, he was All-State in the 1600 and outdoor track. His junior year saw him to be the Conference 25 and Regional Champion across country, fourth in the state meet for All-State. The indoor track, he won the 1600-meter run at the state meet. An outdoor track, he was the Conference 25 and Regional Champion in the 1600-meter run and 800-meter run. He capped it off with double first-place finishes at the state track meet in the 1600 and 800 meters. With realignment, his senior year, Clint won the Region 2A Cross-Country Championship and finished third in the state meet. Ever satisfied, he cranked it up during the winter track after signing a national letter of intent to run for cross-country and track for Virginia Tech. Clint led the Islanders to a fourth-place finish in the indoor state meet with first-place wins in 1600 and 1,000-meter runs, and he anchored the 4x400-meter relay to a second-place finish. He now possesses ten All-State certificates with five of those first places. He most recently was selected as the Peninsula Athletic Association's Cross-Country Athlete of the Year and is in the running for the PEA Athlete of the Year. Please join me in congratulating Clint for his accomplishment. So next, we'd like to recognize the 4x400 relay team for winning second place at the state track meet. If Jacob Gendrom would come forward? He's a senior, and he plans to major in chemistry at William &amp; Mary. Please join me in congratulating him. Scott Duncan. Scott plans on majoring in sports medicine, either at JMU, Virginia Tech, Shannon Doh, or ODU. Please join me in congratulating him. And Clint Gault, if he'd come back up. And plans in majoring in Business Management at Virginia Tech. Congratulations. And Austin Gault, who's also a senior, is Austin here. Please join me now in congratulating our 4x400 relay team for winning second place at the state track meet. From the track to the pool, the Porcosson High School swim team had a very successful season. All swimmers dropped time in at least three events during the regular season. Eight swimmers swam in regionals and qualified for states. At states, all Porcosson High School swimmers placed in the top eight, scoring points for our team. Not only did these student athletes swim best times- Not only did these student athletes swim best times at states, but they grew together as a team while representing the city of Procoson. The boys' 200-yard freestyle relay placed third in the state, and each swimmer swam a personal best in the 50 freestyle. Morgan Miller, who cannot attend this evening but will be recognized at another meeting, placed first in both her individual events. Right now, we would like to recognize the 200-yard freestyle relay team for winning third at the state meet. I'd ask now that Zach Bennett come forward. Zach is a junior at the high school, so we'll have him back next year. Next, Matthew Costa. Who is also a junior and will be returning to us next year. Jack Graham. Jack is a senior, and he'll be majoring in chemistry at UVA. Shane Scott. Shane is also a senior, and he'll attend Virginia Tech to major in engineering. Please join me in congratulating our 200-yard freestyle relay team for placing third at the state competition.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish, and at this time, we will take a break.
You brought me already all of these. I don't need anything else.
All right. Next up is presentations and reports, and first is our financial update with Ms. Woodruff.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, members of the school board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I wanted to give you a quick update on the budget process. The general assembly session ended without a completed budget, and will begin a special session on April 11th. Therefore, there may be changes to our budget once the state finalizes their budget. Dr. Parrish will be presenting the proposed budget in the work session immediately following this meeting. The budget will be available for review tomorrow on the PCPS website and at the Procoson Public Library. Additionally, there will be a public hearing on the budget here on Tuesday, March 27th, at 6:00. And that concludes my report.
Hey, thank you. Any questions there? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And next is operations update with Mr. Papas.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, school board, and Dr. Parrish. In the area of safety, the security cameras and door access devices that have been acquired through the 2017 security grant have been installed. It should be noted that as a result of state grants that we have received each year, PCPS has spent a quarter of a million dollars on security upgrades to all schools since 2013. Virginia law requires that every public school conduct a tornado drill every year in order to ensure that students are thoroughly practicing such drills. Today, at 9:45 across the state, the scheduled statewide tornado drill was conducted, and all four of our schools participated. In the area of maintenance, over the spring recess, the maintenance staff, in conjunction with numerous vendors, will be spending quality time commissioning the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning control system that was part of the CIP project for that building. That step ushers in the last and final phase of that particular project. In the area of transportation, all schools are required to conduct two bus evacuation drills each year, and the second round of these drills has already begun, and all will be completed by April 17th. And that concludes my operations report.
My apologies, Mr. Papas. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Papas? Thank you very much. And next up, Dr. Fox with the instructional update.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, Vice Chair Whitaker, board members, and Dr. Parrish. Tonight, I'm going to be sharing information with you about some of the wonderful things that are taking place in our library media centers and within our maker spaces. Our library media specialists are continually looking for ways to engage students in literacy and learning. In the interest of time tonight, I'm only going to be able to share with you a snapshot of the exciting things that are taking place, but please be assured and know that there are many, many great things taking place in our library media centers every day. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank our library media specialists for their continued hard work in our schools. At Procoson Primary School, the library media specialist, Ms. Meredith Archer, has been engaging students in literacy and STEM this year. STEM is science, technology, education, or, excuse me, engineering and math. For example, second-grade students complete a monthly STEM challenge that corresponds to classroom content and a story read aloud that's read aloud to them during library resource. Recently, students read the Irish folk tale "Jamie O'Rourke and the Big Potato," investigated pulleys, and worked collaboratively to build their own pulley. They then used their pulley to determine how many pennies are needed to lift their potato off the ground. Students have also enjoyed learning to code using the Coda pillars and B-bots, or tinker in our maker spaces with Play-Doh and puzzles to further develop their literacy skills. At Procoson Elementary School, the library media specialist, Ms. Dory Holder, created activities which supported classrooms for the Global Read Aloud Project, where they showcased the reading of the books Fenway and Hattie and The Wild Robot, which were read simultaneously around the world. The Battle of the Books team is again participating in regional competition. The NOOK e-readers are in circulation for students to use and are loaded with many popular titles. The library media center engaged students in Read Across America Week, and the Wild Wild West Book Fair kicked off with Family Reading Night with a Western theme. Tinker Tuesdays are a hit, with students using maker spaces to create, problem-solve, build, and work in teams. One activity had students create parachutes for water bottles and measure the distance the bottles traveled. In the Procoson Middle School library, media center specialist, Ms. Chris Tyler, is keeping students engaged in a number of ways. Students are participating in author visits, competing in Battle of the Books, tinkering in the maker space area, participating in Teen Reading Week, the Hour of Code, poetry, pizza, and peppermints, the Oscars for Books Book Cake Contest, where there are 33 book cake contestants this year, and the upcoming Poem in Your Pocket Day. Students also wrote and submitted 291 essays for the Procoson Public Library essay contest. During lunch, students can visit the media center for the lunch bunch activities, or they can enjoy a weekly visit from a therapy dog. At Procoson High School, the library media specialist, Ms. Beth Roper, has been working to help teachers implement project-based learning. Students have been busy using the computers in the new maker space area to do things such as research and design roller coasters in calculus, research and present ideas modeled after the Shark Tank show in English classes, and use Ozobots to travel through models of cities in world language classes. The addition of the 3D printer has enabled students to design and fabricate items for class projects, such as marketing campaigns, science fair projects, and public service announcements. The new green screen is a hit with students, allowing them to create, edit, and produce video content. So you've heard me mention it a couple of times tonight, these maker spaces, and I hope you're saying, well, what is a maker space? One of our goals over the past two years has been to create a maker space in each of our libraries. I'm happy to share that as of today, each of our schools has its own maker space, with new and exciting activities and products being added on a regular basis. Maker spaces are being supported through our Department of Defense Educational Activity Grants. You'll heard them before, our DODIA STEM Grant, and they're also aiding in the implementation of project-based learning. Additionally, because many maker spaces encourage students to try new technologies, they provide an avenue for the revised computer science standards of learning to be embedded in activities for students, especially in areas such as coding and programming. So a maker space, what is it? Just going to give you a quick rundown. A maker space is a place that provides students an opportunity to explore personal interests, learn how to use a variety of tools and methods and materials, both physical and virtual. It allows students to problem-solve, think critically, and develop creative projects. Students can come to the library media center on their own to use the maker space, or they can participate in an activity with a class. Maker spaces are about encouraging students to explore and discover, create, build, and invent, try something new, use a new or different technology, discover failure in a safe environment, collaborate, overcome obstacles and challenges, and to find a passion. Here's a brief sampling of some of the other exciting things that are taking places through our maker spaces. So students are learning about circuits and conductors through makey-make activities. You can make a piano out of a banana. They're learning to code with B-bots, Coda pillars, and Sphero's. They're designing and building using 3D pens, which are really cool if you haven't seen one. They're using the Ozobot to learn programming. And they're creating with 3D printers, and they're also using what's known as Tinkercad software online to be able to create their designs in the 3D printer. And for other students who may not want to do something with technology, we also have hands-on things like these Kevla planks, where they can build and design at their own pace. And lastly, for you, here's just another list of some of the really cool things that are taking place in our maker spaces. Just to highlight a few, they're designing with button makers. They're making products out of duct tape, like a duct tape wallet. They're using pearler beads, and they're constructing and learning circuits by creating LED light-up cards. So as you can see, lots of really exciting things are taking places for our students, not only in our library media centers, but with our new maker spaces. So again, thank you to our library and media center specialists for making it happen for our students. That concludes my report tonight.
A 3D printer, what grade level do they get to?
We have them in, at the secondary level right now, so we'll be adding those at the primary and elementary level next year.
They can go, it's free to go on the T... Remember what she said, to design these parts?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's pretty cool.
It is.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and next up is public comment, and Ms. Cara Catlett, is that right? Okay, please go on.
Good evening, Dr. Parrish, Mr. Carter, and members of the council. My name is Cara Catlett, and I'm the one that called a meeting inviting concerned citizens to discuss our concerns, ideas, and thoughts on school safety. And SROs, School Resource Officers. We met Sunday, and Mayor Hunt and several councilmen attended. Both encouraged us to approach our school board with our concerns. Mayor Hunt added he must receive a request from you all for the subject to even be discussed by the council. It was a great relief to see it had already made your agenda. The letter also, the letter that you included also reflected our feelings exactly, and for that, we thank you. I know that our chief of police supports our request. I spoke with Sheriff Danny Diggs in length today, and he will be emailing the council on his support as well. Our goal is for two student resource officers, at least. We know there is a lot on your plates. We know that you have school improvements, and we know the budget is tight. We understand the difficulty of prioritizing it all. As parents in our homes, we want to provide our children with the very best. By the time we provide them with their needs, there often leaves us less for fun, pretty, state-of-the-art, eye-catching things. We must shave off so much of what we want and what they want to provide them with what they really need. We ask you to think the same way when you make your vote on this matter. We ask you to protect our children, like many other schools are doing with student school resource officers, and also explore ways to provide more for counselors and looking into mental illness within our schools. Thankfully, Great Mills, Maryland, had done just that. Their student resource officer stopped a shooter this morning, and I'm afraid... Their press conference was very hard to watch, and I'm afraid that Procoson could not say what Great Mills Mayor did this morning about investing in school safety and student resource officers. We beg you to vote to change that, even if it means cutting some of the pretty things in the renovations. Our children are being bullied, and they are bullying. They are using and selling and buying drugs. They are writing threats on walls, and they are finding threats on walls, and some lack direction in their home. Not only could a school resource officer, in combination with other support within the schools, make our schools safer and more secure, but they could assist teachers, parents, students, and faculty with all of these tough issues. So with all that said, I thank you all for making this a priority... For making this a priority to meet your agenda tonight, and thank you for taking the time to write your letter. It is my plan to now request Mayor Hunt to add this topic of SROs and school safety to his agenda for the meeting on the 26th. It is my hope he will once again call a vote on this very discussion that Councilman Canelo so bravely brought up at the last meeting. It would be great and much easier to enter that meeting Monday with a school board request to discuss school resource officers. We think our children are most definitely worth it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Fox, Allison Fox.
Hi, everybody. I'm Allison Fox. I'm a resident here. I've lived here for about thirty years. I went to school here, so I know some of you. I have Tyler in the high school, my Joey is a rising middle schooler, and then Emily will be in school in a couple of years. So the School Resource Officer movement or initiative is really important to me. I don't have anything, like a speech prepared, but I've done a lot of research that I just wanted to share with you. So forgive me if I'm not as eloquently spoken as Cara. So first, I will provide you with a couple of definitions that I shared with the mayor and the other council members. The federal definition of a School Resource Officer is a career law enforcement officer with sworn authority who is deployed by an employing police department or agency in a community-oriented policing assignment to work in collaboration with one or more schools. This is different from a security officer. So a school security officer is somebody who might, let's just say, run metal detectors or assist administrators with school policy violations. Their role is different than a School Resource Officer. They're not going to arrest anybody. They're not going to intervene when a crime has been committed. So just know that the roles are different when you're going to ask for something. I've reached out to a lot of SROs in the neighboring jurisdictions and some of their daily duties include, first of all, they're the first line of safety. They're visible. They do perimeter checks. You're not going to have a security officer doing perimeter checks. Why? Because if they see something, what are they going to do? Tell them to stop? They have no gun. They can't do anything. So you want School Resource Officers, sworn officers, doing these perimeter checks. They work with the narcotics units and other detective units such as white-collar crimes, special victims units, like sexual assaults. They gather a lot of intel. They're the eyes and ears of the schools. They share that information with the police department and people that are investigating crimes. And if you've had your ears open in the high schools and the middle schools, there's a lot of that going on that people don't want to talk about. There are also teachers. SROs are teachers. So they educate the students on cyberbullying, bullying, sexting, human trafficking, how to interact with police if they're stopped. They can do a Criminal Justice Club. They will be present during lunch duty and for after-school activities and other activities dictated by the school. The qualifications are that they must be a law enforcement officer. They're teaching juveniles. This is a specialty position, not just anybody can do it. Right now, you have a school liaison that is there a few hours a day, a few hours a week. They are law enforcement. They have no special training. You cannot pick somebody, just somebody who wants to sign up for extra duty, which is what New Horizons does. They're extra-duty officers. They rotate. They've already worked their forty hours and they're looking for some overtime. They're worn out. They're not trained. When we talk about criticism when it comes to SROs, this is where the problems lie. It's irresponsible. It's reckless. You need somebody trained. Some of their training includes, and I'm talking about specifically School Resource Officers, their training includes the school climate, discipline, violence, threat assessments, advanced legal issues, technology-related search and seizure, adolescent brain development, effects of trauma on students, mental health issues, special populations, and gang awareness. I've been talking to staff members of Pecosa City Schools that will not talk to you because they're fearful. They're fearful of their administrators. They do not want their names out there because of fear of retribution. But I wrote down three quotes from three different people today that work in your schools and I promised them I would not share their names. One person said, "I think we need an SRO here at the high school. You have my support one hundred percent." Another staff member advised, "I do think that having an SRO would be highly beneficial, mainly to act as a deterrent," which we know officers are. My kid over here knows what he can get away with and I can guarantee you the rest of the students in those schools know what they can get away with too. And if there's an officer walking the halls, they are a lot less likely to blare their speaker out of their bookbag or make comments to other children.
Fox, if you could...
Wrap it up.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
The third quote is, "I see the possibilities and positive things that come from an SRO in school. Some of our students are going to meet an officer. One way, I'd rather it be positive." I can go on and on about the debate. I have a lot of notes. I'm preparing something for council next week. But I would encourage you, all of you, to research what the U.S. Department of Justice and Education jointly released in 2016, which is a rubric and it is entitled, "Safe School-Based Enforcement Through Collaboration, Understanding, and Respect." It's also known as SECURE. And this is helpful when you're implementing an SRO program and it's also helpful when you're reassessing an already existing program.
Department of Justice, 2016, SECURE.
SECURE, 2016, U.S. DOJ and Education. They jointly released it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And as always, we welcome and appreciate public comment and I know it's called to get up and address a board like that and so I appreciate the courage to come out and say your piece. So thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Whitaker, could you please walk us through the consent?
Absolutely. There are five items on the consent agenda. All were closed in the board packet that was posted online. Approval of financial reports, approval of personnel action, authorization to approve a regular meeting and work session, authorization to session on March thirteenth, 2018, authorization to dispose of surplus property.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the consent? Second?
Second.
Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Mossdell, aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Sharon Woodruff?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next up, other matters for consideration. First is consideration of approval of the second reading of Change to Policy Six, Tac One dot two, accreditation. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we brought this to you as a first reading at your February meeting and this has included in it a change to eliminate the advanced ed phrases within the policy because of the changes that the state made to their accreditation procedures. A board previous to you all, some of you, had opted to no longer partake in the advanced ed accreditation. So this aligns our policy with practice. So with that said, I recommend approval of the changes to Policy Six dash...
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve? In a second?
Second.
Any questions there? Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Mossdell?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Sharon Woodruff?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is consideration of approval of the 2018-19 calendar. There's a reading file, Dr. Parrish.
Yes, we provided you a reading file and a draft copy of the calendar. As is the case, we continue to work with the regional calendar because there are six school divisions that share all of the New Horizons programs. So this enables us to ensure that our students can get full access to those programs. There really hasn't been much of a change to the calendar. We still will have the day break at Thanksgiving, which this will be our third year of that. We also, this year, for next year, are aligning a couple of our early release days with the other school divisions that share New Horizons so that, again, the students will all be on the same schedule regionally. So that is a change this year that I think is great for our students. One thing that's a little different on this calendar that I want to draw your attention to is what we proposed is on Monday, November twelfth, which is the federal and the state holiday for Veterans Day, that we do something a little different. What we've done before on Veterans Day is done an early release so that in the afternoon, teachers could continue to have conferences or maybe involved in some professional development or doing some other work. So because we thought families might go away for that weekend because they may have the Veterans Day weekend, that we would flip it and have a start school a little bit later, which is something that we actually did this year as a result of inclement weather. And so that families might then could possibly come in a little bit later on Sunday evening and not have the early morning or might even decide that they'll drive back in Monday morning, send their students to school. And also some conferences going on, then it is a morning where some parents may have the ability to be off from work that actually could do some conferencing that morning without having to take time off of work. So it is a change, but it works really well. We did it for the inclement weather. And so in meeting with our group of teachers who give input in the calendar, they also thought it was a great idea. So we'll make sure that if you approve this calendar that we clearly message that so our community understands what we're doing. But I wanted to make sure you understood why we're doing something a little bit different that day. So and it does also enable in the afternoon, our students typically do some things to celebrate Veterans Day. So we'll still have them to be able to do that in the afternoon. With that, I recommend approval of the 2018-2019 cal...
Ma'am, do I have a motion to approve the 2018-19 calendar? So moved. In a second?
Second.
Any questions there?
I just have one question. Was there any consideration or discussion or debate about adding only two extra days?
No, really because we're boxed, so boxed in between the Labor Day and not going past that other weekend in June, that there wasn't a way to do those two days because we do have listed on the calendar the makeup days that we will have to use. As we did this year, we ended up having to use our Presidents' Day holiday. So my hope is that parents and families look at those and realize that could be changed if we get weather. So we continue to be boxed in with the state law that we can't start until after Labor Day. So we thought maybe there was some hope that would make it through this year to allow us some more flexibility.
And that's to make sure that all the crops are in before...
I think that's why it used to be like that, but not so much now.
I thought that's what it was. All right, Ms. Reimers.
Ms. Mossdell?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel? Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Sharon Woodruff?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
And next up is consideration of approval of the letter in support of the officer program. And as alluded, the letter was posted and I can read that. Dear Mayor Hunt, in light of conversations being held by members of the Pecosa community, we thought it important that city council knows that we continue to school Resource Officer Program should the council determine that the Pecosa Police Department should implement such a program. We understand that the SRO program is part of community policing as it allows an officer to forge relationships with students and staff and in some instances to deliver instruction to students, part of the school curriculum. We also understand that an SRO can assist in law enforcement investigations and in problem-solving in the school. In essence, the SRO is involved in prevention and intervention when it comes to crimes or other related issues. We understand that this program would require that an additional officer be hired and provided with training and equipment and all of this would commit an additional cost to the city. Please know we continue to appreciate the support the Pecosa Police Department provides through the School Police Liaison Program at the high school and understand it will be more active this spring. We also appreciate the support provided on all other occasions which the department has supported our schools, whether observing drills, assisting in investigations, providing support in moments of crisis. We know the Chief of Police and Superintendent work together very closely and often communicate on a weekly basis. Please feel free to let me or other board members know if we can be of service to you with regard to this issue. We continue to be grateful for the positive relationship that we have with city council and city staff. It is this partnership that continues to ensure that we can meet the needs of our schools and as a result, our community. So that is the letter. And do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments about ma'am or anything that was said tonight in the discussion there?
I have a question. I'd just like to know if the cards, what individuals sign in, that they would like to speak during public comments, say, to let them know that there is dialogue between... Because I always worry about individuals watching at home when they come in front of us with important information that they think that we're not, we don't care because we can't comment during the public section. So I don't know if it's listed on the card. Does it tell them that...
Actually, it does not, but that's a very good point. Thank you for bringing that up.
We'll make sure they have that in the future. That's great. Thanks.
Anything else on the...
I do have a couple of things to say, but I'm going to add them in my petition from school board portion here.
Okay. You know, there is an awful lot of chatter out there. There are very good SRO programs, like you alluded to. And Ms. Fox hit on a couple of very important points. It's the training and the effectiveness of officer in the program. It really is what helps forge those relationships with the students and helping students be more responsive to officers. And so there is good, a lot of good that can come from an SRO program. And I believe I speak for the board. The good, we see the potential benefit. And anybody else? Questions there?
I agree with you completely.
Now, as far as westing of city council, I think it is important to note that that is a police officer that is employed by the... Those issues there, we would have to work through. Anybody else? Right. Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Mossdell?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Sharon Woodruff?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
And Communications, Dr. Parrish, you want to...
Yes, so I first want to thank the speakers for coming tonight because I know too, it's sometimes hard to stand up in front of people you absolutely may not have met. I do appreciate the support that you continue to pride our schools and any of you, I say others in the audience. I know you do it in a number of ways, so we appreciate that. And certainly, my door is always open if you ever have any questions or want to call or come visit. I also do want to make sure our community knows that on our website, under Pecosa City Public Schools News on the homepage, there is a safety presentation. It's brief, but it does provide some outlines of some steps that we take to ensure the safety of our students. And we continue to update those as well. I'm also doing an update for the school board in the work session following this meeting to talk about some other things that we're doing during the course of this year. So I just want to reassure you that we're always looking at our security and safety measures and continue to update. And as Dr. Carter said, I do work very closely with our Chief of Police and he's helped with that. So just to, wanted to let you know that that presentation's out there. As Ms. Woodruff said, I will be presenting the budget in the work session and I will get that budget presentation narrated and hopefully on our website by the end of the week. So those of you watching at home, if you'd like to hear the presentation, we'll have that out there as soon as possible. And I plan to go to all of the schools tomorrow and I'll give that presentation at each of the schools to all of our staff. I also want to highlight that on Thursday, we have our instructional program being highlighted. It is Thursday from six to eight at the high school, but this involves programs from all four of our schools. So we will have a variety of topics. So if you're just interested in learning more about our instructional programs, you had a great example of that today with Dr. Fox's presentation. And we'll have some students there. I think we're even going to, to kick it off, have some high schoolers do a very brief performance for us. So I just encourage people to come and not just parents and board members, but community members because I know you are very supportive of our schools. So it's just a wonderful opportunity for you to get a real sense of what we're doing in those classrooms. So put that on your calendar and hopefully by Thursday, weather will not be an issue. And I thought I can't not address that tonight. So many parents who are in the audience, I assume, got their five o'clock phone call that at this point, we are sending our students to school and on time. We will be monitoring the weather. At this point, the forecast shows that we'll have school all day, but we know things can change. And so we just wanted to let our parents know that in case the weather deteriorates or that forecast changes, there is a chance then that we have to consider an early dismissal. So hopefully, everybody has those plans and the times for the early dismissal schedule are on the website. So hopefully, everybody has those plans and the times for the early dismissal schedule are on the website and in the student handbook. But I'm remaining optimistic that we're going to be in school all day tomorrow. And with that said, we do have spring break, the first week of April, which tells me we have to be done with the snow soon. And so I do wish everybody safe travels if you're traveling on spring break. And our schools and offices will be closed during that week, but we'll be welcoming everybody back after spring break. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am Carter.
Pecosin primary students and staff love reading. This past month, they've celebrated this love in a few different ways. They kicked off March with the annual book fair. Students had the opportunity to purchase books for their personal libraries and to help select a book for their classroom library from the book fair. PPPS celebrated reading aloud to students during the first few weeks of March with teachers reading the always entertaining Dr. Seuss to the students. Along with reading, the students and staff dressed in the themes to match the books. They dressed as their favorite career. They dressed with clothing with words written on them and they dressed as twins for twin day. Dr. Seuss Week ended with a parade where students and staff dressed as the cat in the hat. On March 2nd, students enjoyed another day of listening with Real Men Read Day. A big thank you to goes out to Mr. Charlie French and the Pecosin Education Foundation for the help in hosting the event. The morning kicked off with an author, Anna Berger, who read aloud during the morning announcements her newest book, Sea Hunt. After reading Sea Hunt, local celebrity, Pecosin night men visited classrooms where they read aloud to eager students. The morning ended with the Pecosin Education Foundation hosting a short reception for the reader. The month ended with parents getting involved as well. All students received a free copy of the Lemonade War to take home and read aloud with their parents. The Lemonade War kickoff began with all students watching a Redskins offensive lineman, Ari Kunenjo, reading chapter one via pre-recorded video. Parents are encouraged to read the remaining chapters aloud at home and send photos via Twitter and Facebook to celebrate this occasion. Students continued to celebrate at school by answering trivia questions, drinking lemonade and wearing yellow. Lastly, PPS students are busy putting finishing touches on their presentations and displays for the PCPS instructional showcase. Stop by the showcase Thursday evening to see the students in action. The Pecosin Elementary School has had an exciting month. On March 14th, PES family had a financial literacy night where the Bayport Credit Union came out and conducted a fun-filled evening where students played bingo and won prizes and were able to open a checking account. This past weekend, the PES Battle of the Books team placed second in the regional competition. Three Odyssey of the Mine teams competed at the local competition and two of the teams placed first and will now go on to the state competition. If you ordered cookie dough from the Pecosin Elementary School, pickup is tomorrow after school. Thank you for your support. The Pecosin Middle School collected 6,463 box tops. We appreciate all families that contributed to make this drive a success. Spring pictures will take place on Thursday, March 29th. We are currently gearing up for academic career planning at Pecosin Middle School. Throughout the month of April, the middle school councils will meet with every eighth grade student and his or her parent to create, or parents to create individualized academic and career plans. During these meetings, counselors, students and parents will review educational and occupational options. Then they will work together to land the framework of accomplishing these student goals. Plans created in eighth grade are reviewed and updated annually with the student's high school counselor until the student graduate. Academic and career plans encourage students to consider not only the end goal, but also specific steps to take to get there. Our Take a Stand, Lend a Hand Bullying Prevention Program is focused on trust for the remainder of the third quarter. We will transition to the topic caring after spring break for the for the remainder of the year. Pecosin High School continues to charge ahead with lots of exciting events happening both in and out of the classrooms. Recently, the school community came together to hold a day of kindness in which students honored the Stoneman Douglas High School community while also promoting acts of kindness within our own school and local community. As a part of this day and as a continuation of our ongoing efforts to educate and prevent bullying, our entire school community participated in our fourth Bull's Eye Lesson of the Year, highlighting kindness. Resulting from our Bull's Eye Lesson, PHS students have come together to begin a chapter of We Dine Together, a club to ensure that no one eats alone. Our students also came together this month to celebrate Spring Fest, a week-long event that honored diverse interests in our school and accumulated in the Saturday evening with a live band, food, games and a petting zoo. PHS was fortunate to have several guest speakers, including Ashley Vowrath, the Miss, the current Mrs. Virginia USA and a PHS graduate. She spoke with students about her struggles with her learning disability and about being successful academically despite facing the challenges. The talents of Islanders were also honored this month, this past month. Our choral students competed at their formal assessment, receiving excellent ratings for their performance and superior ratings for their singing, their sight singing. PHS took a silver medal in the Get It Together Buckle Up Campaign, beating out over 30 schools to be recognized for their ongoing activities to increase seatbelt safety. This past weekend, our Odyssey of the Mine team had an excellent showing at the regional competition. The next few months are sure to bring more good news and we invite the community to join us for a fantastic spring season. Our spring band encouraged chorus concerts as well as our spring musical, The Addams Family. Be sure to check the website for all dates and the latest accomplishments of our students and events in our local community.
Good gracious. Nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, I'd like to thank the students who presented and those that congratulated, excuse me, congratulate those that were recognized tonight. I'd also like to thank those who came tonight, spoke out on social media, contacted school board members in regards to the School Resource Officer. I assure you that the safety of our students and staff are one of our highest priorities. Students should be able to come to school and learn. Teachers should be able to teach in a safe and non-toxic environment. And I respectfully ask City Council to consider a School Resource Officer. The public overwhelmingly supports it. The school board supports it and we support it. And I hope you will add it to your next work session. Thank you. No further comment.
Ms. Helson?
Off what Ms. Rossella said, as usual, because you just summed it up perfectly. Thank you for speaking tonight, ladies. Really, everything you said resonates completely with me and it's very heartfelt. Council, we all agree that we need a school board.
I did want to thank you as well, Kara and Allison for coming to speak. And I couldn't, I couldn't say it any better than you folks have. We do support you definitely. I also thought it was very exciting for our high school students to get be involved in Nassau Hunch Project, which gave them an opportunity to take a roller blade boot. That is a foot restraint. Dang, we are so creative at our. I'm very, very impressed with that. And with the leadership of Ms. Facella and Mr. Diggs to lead those kids on an exciting project. And I wish them good luck in continuing to develop that project. I also, in reading the board packet, had a bittersweet moment, which I have to say, a bittersweet goodbye and good wishes for two wonderful Pecosin elementary teachers that I've known and cared about for many years. It's Bobby Pappas and Kim Poto have announced their retirement. And I feel the same way, yes. I just wanted to say that it would be, it's sort of the end of an era. They will be much missed and remembered with great affection. That's what I have to say.
Ms. Sheila just touched on it, but I'm always so impressed with our special presentations and even so much so with the Nassau Hunch presentation by the students this evening. We certainly have some high-level students partnering partnering with that particular project. Again, congratulations to all our state champs and the top three finishers in the wrestling, swimming and track. And Curtis touched on it. I just wanted to thank Charlie French, who's become a really good friend of mine through my participation with the Educational Foundation for organizing that Real Men Read initiative at the Pecosin primary and elementary schools. Having taken part in that event over the course of the past couple of years since the implementation of that event, the students loved that day. And it was cool for me this year, having to go and read for my kindergartner in her primary school class this year. So thanks to Charlie and the Educational Foundation for the for the nice breakfast following that event as well.
Actually, yes, I do have a couple of things. I think I'm going to make up for not having anything to say at last meeting. So hold on to your hats. I, Facebook, Facebook can be very dangerous. It can also be very beneficial. I read all the posts, all the comments with great interest this weekend. I will say that I did not read the 400-plus comment on the poll about the boat tax going towards the SRO. I have my limits and I was not going to keep looking at all those replies. There were a couple of things that concerned me. Facebook and your posts were generally wonderful. Sharing information, getting everybody together was great. There were some assumptions. There was some speculation. There were some accusations that I didn't think were appropriate. Unfortunately, that's the world that we live in. I will say that I have been on this board since 2012 and we have discussed the, and we have discussed it with City Council. However, when you're building a budget and there are limited amounts of funds available, sometimes you have to prioritize things and we have to put things to the bottom of the list that maybe should be at the top. And perhaps in past years, that's been our shortcoming in not putting it way at the top, this SRO. But I assure you, we have discussed it and it has been something that we have never forgotten, that we have always wanted to add back into our discussion. And I appreciate you all bringing this forward. And I hope you all understand the importance of your role here, that you all came together, you saw something that you thought was lacking and you came together and you're a voice and you're a movement. And that is what we need more of. Often, we come to these meetings and we don't have anybody in these seats other than staff. So it's wonderful to see you here and I'd like to see more of that in the future because we are discussing the schools. We are discussing what our kids need and we need your input, as does City Council. Because if we don't hear from you, it's easy for us to assume that everything's okay. So that's why we want to hear from you. Another thing I wanted to to say is on Facebook's been kind of bantering around this 20-plus million dollars that the city is going to give to the school division. Well, it's my understanding and Dr. Parrish will jump in if I am wrong, and it's very possible I am wrong, that this is the amount of money that the city could assume as debt. And it is not all for schools. It is for the city CIP programs, some of the things they need and also for what the school needs. Some of that would be, if we get it, would be towards improving the middle school. But it's also for big-ticket items like two roofs and school buses. So not all of that money would be for schools. In addition, I'm not a, I'm not a finance person. Ms. Woodruff is our finance person. She would be able to explain this better. But it's my understanding that you don't want to fund a position, including fringe benefits, with one-time money. And if you are bringing on this 20 million dollars, put it towards capital programs. So so that money, as far as I I'm aware, really is not best served going to something like. Next item, and this kind of goes with it. I've seen, I saw also on Facebook, people saying that people weren't responding to them, whether it was us or City Council. And I just, I I implore everybody that if you're calling somebody and you're not getting someone, whether it's one of us or City Council, or be in the schools, send them an email, put it in writing, ask for verification of receipt. And if you don't get it, send it again and CC somebody else on it. And therefore, you know, then you've got yourself covered. We've got ourselves covered. We can say, yes, it came in or no. And a lot of times you can get pretty far in an email because we're going to read them. We do get them, we're going to read them. And CC Dr. Parrish in these things if you're trying to reach out to us because I guarantee you she responds to emails at all hours of the day and and night, it seems. So she will do that. Finally, and and my applause to all of you for coming together. I admire your passion and it is something that we need more of. Sadly, in June, I am off this board. I have served my two terms and I can't continue. If I could, I would love to because I think we do a lot of good and I get to work with, while Wayne Holcomb's not here, I get to work with six phenomenal people and an amazing staff. They truly are amazing. So the opportunity is there. If you're in the central precinct district, whatever it's called in Pecosin, and don't ask me what area central is, I just know that it's me, there will be a spot on the board coming up. I guess City Council will appoint it in May. They should be going out soon looking for people to express their interest. 2012, when I applied for it, I was the only one. I don't want that to happen again. While I would like to think City Council still would have chosen me, there's no guarantee. And I would have liked for them to have had a few more people to choose from. So if you're here in the audience, if you're at home and you're passionate, please consider applying for school board and put that passion to work on a daily basis, serving the school division. And I thank you all very much. Thank you for the interesting weekend. At times, I almost wanted to pop popcorn because it was getting so good. But I really appreciate what you all did and how kind most of you were on Facebook. You really were very, very kind to each other and that's very important. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, with respect, it was a long day, online and in person. I do want to point out, and this is the first I've heard about no response or not listening to the public or something like that. Those type accusations need to be taken with a grain of salt because way back when the state first cut huge chunks out of our budget and we started, my goodness, what are we going to do? And it was one year after another. They were hacking away, hacking away, hacking away. And we're wringing our hands and we're, how are we going to handle this? We solicited the public. We had public meetings and said, we need ideas. Come to us with your ideas. Help us figure this out. So if anybody tells you that that this board will not listen or will not respond, I would call them on it because I, and and I was on before you had a series of unfortunate events and and had to resign and was fortunate enough to come back on. And I never recall a time when we did not solicit, listen to and seriously consider input from the community. These are, this is your schools. These are your schools. So we need that input. But I would, and and Ms. Fox, I apologize. I'm going to go back to something you said earlier because you struck a chord with me when you said, I've done some research. I love research. And I would encourage people to go and look at at the variety of empirical data that is out there that supports certain specific things that schools can do to improve safety. It's been, the data's there, it's unbiased research. Go to Google Scholar, okay? And Google Scholar, and you will find research-backed, peer-reviewed data and findings on school safety. And eye-opening to me, that's what I've been doing. I've been reading this research here for quite a while. I came across a couple of really, really good articles today. But there's some good information out there that's backed by solid research and, you know, robust data analyses that you can tap into and it's free. Google Scholar. But we have addressed, to Mr. Pappas's point, and I had no idea. I had, it was only, it's only been four years that we have spent a quarter of a billion dollars. Huh? 250 million?
No, a quarter of a million. Not billions.
Oh, you said 250,000. Well, man, I had you way up there, buddy. I mean, yeah, I was thinking. I mean, yeah, I was thinking, where do we get this money? I don't remember this. Okay, so, a bunch of money towards, but when you think about what it did go for, the cameras, the doors that lock, all those things, the remote access buttons, those are all things that we have done over the years to improve school safety. So, it's always on our radar, it's always on our agenda, and we're always looking for ways to keep our schools safe and make them safe. So, with that, I would like to say that the, what was it? The hunch is driving me nuts because I cannot figure out why in space with zero gravity, you need more force for a machine to crush can. I could understand if you're gonna stand on it, if you're gonna stand on it, that's one thing, but, so, I'm gonna, that's what I'll be doing here until I figure out that answer. I love the dine, we dine together, no student dining alone, I think that is a fabulous idea. I, I just, I, I hope that takes off and gets a life of its own because that is an awesome idea. I love that idea. And I guess I'll shut up now. Do we have any material for board review?
You do not this evening.
Hey, did I miss anything?
No.
We will adjourn. Thank you.
[inaudible]
[inaudible]